If everybody would stand in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to which it stands one nation under the justice for all. Ms. Yu Daly is unable to join us this evening, but Mr. Dreyer, would you call the room? Here.
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 I have a couple amendments to this evening's agenda. Under approvals, I would like to add in police presentation. And then under discussion items, I would like to add in noise ordinance after the recreational marijuana discussion. Does anybody else have any further amendments, corrections to this evening's agenda? Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 And is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from January 8th, 2024?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Yes.
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 Mr. Terry. Yes.
Minutes approved, five to zero. This evening, I will turn it over to Chief McKee.
The nine I want to recognize Sergeant Derek Prater for twenty years service in the police department. He started here in October two thousand and four as a part-time officer. And then in January of two thousand and twenty-four, he was promoted full-time. And I never forget that the very first week when he was our train, one of the very first calls he got was a a call where an infant had been murdered by his father. And I knew at that time.
I'm a food state on that whole and what we saw there. He's saying he was probably here and again, here twenty years later, he's still here. He's probably one of the most dedicated officers I have at the police department. I appreciate every day, everything he does. And so.
This isn't the big twenty-five year one I usually do, but again, I might not be here in twenty, or when he appreciates those twenty-five years. And it's just nice to know that we have somebody that's going to lead the police department in the future. You know, with his, with his dedication and his morals and ethics. So. I'd like to put that down with a certificate of congratulations for Derek Prater for all the years of continued dedication to find service with Plain City Police Department.
You can come out.
Thank you, Sergeant Prater. We really appreciate your dedication service to Plain City and really appreciate knowing that your leadership is definitely noticed in the community. So, thank you. Our next certificate of appreciation, I would like Mr. Norm Troyer to come forward up here. And I will come out.
It's my pleasure at Plain City to organize Mr. Norm Troyer. Mr. Troyer graciously donated the material and labor to complete the reworking of the Lions Building at Pastime Park. This act of generosity is an excellent example of supporting community and its residents, which Mr. Troyer has been a part of for numerous years. So, village of Plain City is privileged and grateful to have new members like Mr. Norm Troyer on behalf of the village of Plain City. Thank you. We've got a very sincere testimony and a full-term commitment from you here this time. Thank you so much.
Okay. We have several, we have several visitors this evening. I would like Mrs. Susan Thompson with the Madison County Board of Developmental Disabilities. If it is okay with council, we are going to waive three minutes for Mrs. Thompson to present. Okay with everybody?
Yeah.
I promise it won't be much longer than three minutes. I am Susan Thompson. I'm the superintendent with the Madison County Board of DD. I have been there as superintendent since about 2016. It was early December and I got an email from the, our State Department that there was about fourteen point two million dollars in ARPA money sitting at the state. And all eighty-eight county boards of disabilities were able to apply for some of this money. So, in my ultimate wisdom, I thought, who better than the mayors of the respective communities to ask what are their needs are? They, they wanted big picture things. They wanted things that would not only improve the lives of individuals with disabilities, it would also improve other citizens. So, I reached out to all the mayors and I received from Justin a request for an improvement for your parking lot out here. And I wanted to just briefly go over, the good news is, we were awarded Madison County four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which I'm thrilled to death about. And of that, a hundred and six thousand will be coming to the Village of Plain City for you guys to do just that. We were fully funded, but I gave everybody has a packet, they should have. I just wanted to show you, the first page was the best news of all when you got the approval from CMS, which as we, if anyone's dealt with the government, whenever, until you get that final approval, approval, you never know. So, that's the first page. And on page two and three is actually the declaration from the governor. And I wanted to briefly, which is mind-boggling to me, sixty-seven counties at the very top of the page, sixty-seven counties out of eighty-eight applied for the money. So, for all of us that can do basic math, that's twenty-one counties that didn't even bother to send for free money, which is, again, mind-boggling to me. You go about midway down through the page, with these funds, people with disabilities, their families and Ohio communities will see investments in things like universal changing tables and accessible public places and parks. Highlights of the projects include empowering people with disabilities to live and engage independently. There were thirty-two applications received, two point five million. Improving infrastructure, which was about seven million, adding universal changing tables, which was four point four. And you know, universal changing tables, for those of us who aren't in the DD world, you really, you really don't understand how invaluable that is to the community. For example, fairs, the county fair, all of our folks love to go to the county fair. And if one of them has an accident or something like that, the whole group has to go home because there's nowhere to change them. And so now we'll have, we'll be able to have two tables that we can loan out to folks to where, if you guys have a big event up here, we can loan you the table so they'll be at my office, but I'll get into that more later on. But it's such a nice thing to have for folks. Creating more of a community experience was six hundred thousand. Ensuring conferences and meetings are inclusive, that was two hundred and twenty thousand. And then increasing outreach was at a hundred and forty thousand. I, I just, if you read through that, I won't read it all to you, but the differences that this will make in people's lives are unbelievable. So, if you flip to please on page three, the next packet, it looks like this. This shows you the breakdown by the buckets that they had. And it shows you, if you go left or right, the different areas, it totals up to four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. And this was all from American Rescue Plan Act money that Ohio was given. And the governor was very kind to let county boards of disability of DD use those funds. So, if you go to the next page, which kind of looks like this, this shows actually what we're going to do with the money across the board. And if you flip to the very last two, it's more of a narrative. And it talks about like, for example, at the top where it says, supported connections, these funds will be the first that we use to send kids to camp. We've got about ten thousand dollars to send kids to camp, which if you've ever priced camp, that's a lot of camp for ten thousand dollars. Accessible communities comes in where your guys' bucket is. If you go down to the very bottom of the page, the Village of Plain City, it talks about your parking lot and what you want to do. The very next, very top of the page shows your a hundred and six thousand that you guys were, will be awarded from us. It's my understanding at this point that grant fund, that funding will come directly to me. And then as your invoices come in, however it works, we will go ahead and pay the invoices out of this fund. So, it will not have any impact on your income or your expenses. So, which is, you know, once it gets up to a hundred and six, then we'll be, that'll be the end of it for that. One thing I do want to mention is, if you look under community experiences, we can all agree that getting to work and doctor's appointments and different things like that aren't what makes life worth living. But if you look down through there, we were also able to get funding for pool passes, movie passes and bowling alley passes for individuals that we serve that are on waivers and their families. And that might not seem like a big deal, but to be able to go to the movie theater and see a movie, you know, or to go to the bowling alley or even, you know, a family pool pass costs a lot of money. And you know, a lot of our folks don't have that. And, but no, that was the, that was the gist of the grant. Does anyone have any questions before I go over the last page? Any questions for me? I want to thank Justin and I don't know who worked with him to fill out the information. It was pretty funny, the grant, I think, was due the next day and I already had it done. And I was so excited because anyone that knows me know I get, I get stuff done a day ahead of time, two days ahead because in case something happens. And I had it all done, ready to submit, and then I got his email and I thought, oh crap, here with like a Plain City. And no, no. And so then I automatically, you know, just changed all the buckets and all that kind of stuff. But I now sit here, wish I would ask for a little bit more, they fully funded it, I wish I could ask for some more. But I'm thrilled to death to do that for Plain City. I think that we can, we currently serve about three hundred and eighty-eight people, forty-four live in Plain City. Forty-four of the individuals we serve live in Plain City. And lastly, this is our annual report, this nice, pretty colorful sheet in front of you. It pretty much is like your elevator spiel of everything we do. So, if there's ever a question or anything like that, my email address and everything, I think I hooked my cards to your, to your guys' packet. So, if you ever have a question, don't hesitate to ask. But I'm thrilled to death to be able to help out Plain City. And as soon as any more grant money comes through, I'll make sure I reach out. I'm a big fan of grand offers. But that's all I have. Any questions?
We appreciate your time this evening and thank you for helping us with this endeavor of helping us to be more accessible. So, thank you. Thank you. I'm going to have Sheriff Patton to come up next. And if everybody's okay, we will waive his three minutes as well.
Well, thank you, Mayor and new council members. Congratulations on, on your new appointment. My name is Jamie Patton, Union County Sheriff. And I just wanted to come, come down and share the fact that I will be on the ballot in, in the March primary and I'm seeking reelection. I, I was appointed in April of two thousand and eleven to finish a, an expired term of the previous sheriff that left for a state position. And so, I've been in office as the Union County Sheriff since. Our relationship with Plain City has been very close with Chief McKee. And we also dispatched for the police department, all their police functions at, at our sheriff's office in Marysville. So, I just wanted to share who I am and, and would appreciate continuing those efforts and look forward to, to several years yet, yet to come in my tenure. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to answer any that may, may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the sheriff?
I figured there'd be one, at least from the chief. Yeah. But he's been great to work with and, and the drug task force and our relationship is, is really close.
And he's allowed us to be the first members for Plain City to be in the Union County Drug Task Force. And also on the SRT team, we've never had that before. And he allowed one of the officers who shook interest in that, which is Sergeant Howard, to do that. So, I'm grateful for that. So, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. And our next visitor is Mr. Eric Medici.
I feel like I was thrown to the wolves. We have all this good feeling things here and I tend to complain. You all know my position on removing the historic district and removing the guidelines specifically from the historic district. I've been a very vocal person against this, but I'm here one last time to say, you guys are taking away your safety net. You, when you do get an appeal, and you will, you're going to end up in court with your solicitor. And the opposing counsel is going to pin you down and say, where's your expert? He made this decision, what's his education? Where was he trained? What does he know? Is he an architect? He's going to eat you alive because you just took the federal guidelines that you could have said, what's the US government? This is their guidelines. This is what we're relying on, this is how we made our decision. And then you're covered. But now, it's going to be a he said, she said. You're going to have people throwing mud at each other. You guys are going to look like fools because they're going to put some expert up there who is going to say, you know, that was a, that was a bad decision. And it's indefensible. You just, you're throwing away your defense. Now, when I read the, what was provided, what you got in your packet, when you read the guidelines that were laid out, I read through them. I think I said this at the last meeting, I did a five-minute read, just ran through once, took notes as I went and I had over a whole page of mistakes. I'm telling you, you're flying without them. All I can do is say, I want you. I really, really think it's a bad idea to remove the guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Medici. That is all of our visitors for this evening. Moving into reports, been working with staff and first responders in the school district for the upcoming solar eclipse on Monday, April eighth. And Plain City's stance on the solar eclipse is that we are going to encourage residents to view the eclipse from the comfort of their homes. People may be traveling through the community that day. We've heard of some possible, you know, gridlock on the highways and Union County is preparing for it. So, there is no school that day. Chief McKee had even, he attended a meeting in Union County and they talked about, there could be potential gas shortages of all the people that are coming to watch the solar eclipse. So, we are just trying to get the word out to residents ahead of time, just to plan as you're making appointments for that day, making any kind of plans, to plan ahead and think of that day, mark it on your calendar. And try to pre-plan on the gas, maybe your grocery store run. It seems kind of crazy because it could be a cloudy day, we don't know, but just err on the caution of a prepper. So, that, that and just helping to fill the committees and getting things organized for the meeting. So, and last week, I hope everybody stayed warm with the really cold temperatures and tomorrow's looking like it's going to be a very icy morning and commute. So, just be cautious on that. But with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Lupton, our village administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. We have put it out on several social media and emails, our website, that we are doing a connectivity study with OSU Nolton School of Architecture. They're doing this study free of charge to us. It's kind of cool working with the grad students on this. They're, they're encouraging all residents to go take it and make your voice heard as we complete this study on multimodal transportation. And then just to echo your thoughts, our crews have been very busy last week, Friday especially, clearing the snow. There will be ice tonight, so they'll be out probably dark and early. Just remind the residents to shovel your sidewalks, make it easier for the kids walking to school especially. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lupton. I do want to highlight this Friday, uptown, there is an art walk in many of the shops. So, plan to attend. It looks like a really good event and helping to get us more connected with local artists and in our uptown business district. So, that is also on the agenda for this week.
What's the time of that?
Oh, that is a good question. I know that five to eight, okay. I knew it was right in the middle of youth basketball, too, on Friday night. So, trying to, I, so thank you. I know, yes, Main Street Treasures is participating, almost every business uptown.
Yeah, I think there were about seventeen or eighteen artists. That's really great.
So, try to work that into your schedule. I'm going to try to get there early before some commitments there. But appreciate everybody whose efforts of getting that put together. Finance director, Ms. Sonnet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief McKee?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of analysis before we go right through Sergeant, right through his presentation. Just as myself, in the Madison County State Communities Meeting, just a reminder, Sergeant, you know, we're twenty through the twenty-seventh of this National Safety Week. Basically, all that is, is that you promised to stop any of your friends or relatives trying to be impaired or distracted and that you won't get in a vehicle with somebody that's either impaired or distracted. And then lastly, at the police department, once again, extended the hiring process through National Testing Network until February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The process started in August of twenty twenty-three, but we still, at the time, have no applicants or qualified applicants. We have tried and we are continuing to find different ways to attract those candidates and we are actually working with them since. Right now, I'm creating a video for the police department and trying to get the word out there about the community that we work for and the support that we have and all the public that we do see here, that we want everybody else to see. And lastly, I did have a long, but I do want to mention this. And one of our goals for safety in the community was to get block cameras. I've been working with Ms. Lupton on this. We actually signed a contract today to get those cameras installed. If you're not familiar with block cameras, they're put in each entrance and exit of the village to capture license plates. And most of the cities around us have them, and both counties are actually getting ready to install them. It just, it just captures license plates in case, for example, when the marathon station was wrong, you're all back. It would be great to have those to capture the license plates as far as coming to town at that time. In the next couple of weeks, those will be starting, you'll start seeing people put those up. We've got five at this time. So, I think it's a great thing and it's one of those things that we can check off our goals. I think Mr. Terry brought it up. I mean, last, last couple of weeks, I totally already had it. Have the same experience, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief McKee. Appreciate. Also, if you haven't re-upped your no-knock registry, it does go off January first. So, appreciate you guys having that. That's a great feature, knowing. Oh, yes.
We are updating our policy for the solicitors. And so, that's some, that's some change.
Oh.
So, we're just waiting now, I think, to probably afford to actually prefer review or call. Probably actually. So, we'll present it to council, see what their opinion is on it.
That is great. I mean, yes. Thank you. Council president, Mr. Terry?
We have our council retreat on Saturday from ten to noon. I would assume it's an open meeting, right? So, feel free to watch us again, twice in one week. Different location. And I just need those, if you could send me, Mr. Sins, those, that goal. But that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Anything from our law director?
Mr. Lafayette just wanted me to pass on that he's excited about attending the council retreat.
Great time, yes.
We can feel his excitement, right? Thank you. Development and marketing committee?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. BZA?
No report and I don't know, I'm looking at Mr. Harsch to see if he knows of anything in February.
In February, we don't have a case, but we'll have our, just our normal, spare in new members and we can just start.
Perfect. Thanks.
And planning commission met January seventeenth, where we swore in our new members and appointed Mr. Brad Swink as the chair. We also approved the final development plan for the spot, which you will see on your agenda this evening. And there were no major concerns that P and Z saw for the development plan. So, very excited to, if once this, if this is passed this evening, they'll be able to work on infrastructure and the road. So, that is, and then be able to go after tenants for that property. So, that is from planning and zoning. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Sins?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Parks and Rec Committee met on January ninth. The two thousand and twenty-four calendar events will be published this week. Walking program, which started on the seventeenth and runs through three twenty-two, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to eleven a.m. at the Ball House, right? And they're averaging about twenty-four walkers per session. Aquatics feasibility study has begun. Multiple Parks and Rec projects are underway, Madison Meadows, Dog Park, Jackson, McKittrick Park, Mc, Mc, McKittrick Meadows Nature Preserve and Heritage Trailhead. If you have more questions, if you have any questions about these, feel free to ask. And then the Aquatic Center, the pool's going to be painted this March and multiple pool improvements in the spring. There is the Arts Walk we just mentioned a minute ago, and that's all I have for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Anything for Tree Commission?
Yes. Meeting on Tuesday, one twenty-three at six thirty p.m. Tree City USA application has been submitted and is awaiting final approval by the Arbor Day Foundation. Planning for Earth Day and Arbor Day activities is underway. And fifteen hundred trees, fifteen hundred plus trees have been ordered free tree, for the free tree giveaway with, and that's no cost to the village. And then we're working on attaining the Arboretum certification for Pastime Park.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Personal on finance and CIP, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report new. Our next meeting is February eighth at six thirty.
Thank you for that update. Fire board?
Nothing to report.
Rules committee?
We have a meeting this evening. We have a meeting right after this meeting. Come and stay, stick around, it'll be even more fun.
And for a mental note from Mr. Dreyer, we add CIC so that we can have that on for future updates. I just made that note while talking. And next meeting, we will have a chamber update from Mr. Sins, who attends the Union County. He is our chamber representative. And so, that'll be our next meeting. Moving out of reports into discussion items, grant status update.
I'm going to pass this to Justin, but since we have some big grants, including a couple on the agenda tonight, I figured he could give an update, especially following Ms. Thompson's report.
Absolutely. Of course, you'll receive some short information that'll have to be quick. Listening very much mostly to you. Pursued a lot of work. So, just kind of, the first thing, moving to the water process for instance, the open bridge program, great, is for the Maple Street Bridge. Like that says, we were, we were awarded a hundred and eight thousand two hundred. Maple Street Bridge. And then the emergency generator bridge, as an element, he successfully awarded the full, costing nine fifty thousand. Completed that, purchase an emergency generator for the water treatment facility, which will be transferred to Menlo High, but super valuable. It was, that was an opportunity that came up. We were very fortunate to go and get that money, it was a very competitive, great application for gold. The next one is through across the previous safety program, I know it was more explicit to be great. A lot of construction, the construction, the construction, the construction. Um, a lot will construct the, the room, and you, or two, must have an intersection, really excited about this one, this is where you construct high visibility crosswalks, the flashing beacons, and sidewalks, the crosswalks, and of course, housing intersection, sidewalks on both sides. Just for additional capacity improvements at that intersection, as we know for. Or then we're gonna be awarded the full amount. Uh, this, and, um, Ms. Thompson said, that was a recent one, and I will say, that is the only one we ever applied to late. All my presentations, like, uh, like she said, her question, or a little slide for that, oh, prepare the, uh, front handicap shopping, uh, which is obviously something that's high right. The next two account lines, the first one, recently applied to, we have a termination, um, again, this is what it says, the one staff is applying to, it's a way here with that. The first one is, um, for your high, yeah, representation for our production, right? So, what we apply for with this is to hear, um, I have not, I have not, I have not, for the villages, and this repair, um, this will replace the current roof structure, which is, so, and, that we can actively store the across almost six hundred tons of salt that just went up in all the works. Application, we'll see, but we made the termination match, so it's shortly. Um, the next one, do, in our conservation, um, again, just, this would do exactly what it says, I did, that dog park. Um, this one will have a little bit of a good time for it before we get back on, but looking forward to, there's, you know, on that. Um, the last one, that is to the state of preparations for, you know, project, for four hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty. And we'll be, we'll wait for that, please, as we receive updates, I'm sure Miss Lufton or I will honestly pass it along to council. The last one, opportunities that we are afraid to apply to, and the first reflect on tonight's agenda, the first one, there being the safe office to school. And I'm really excited about, because we've been working on this for a long, long time. Um, as we may know, like, we're trying to tag on the elementary schools in South in Plant City, um, create, yeah, the safe office school, like, the school travel plan through the safe office school. Last year, that, that travel plan, so to be, in five years, ours was about thirteen years old, but, and, we're, 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 lots of shows and parties on that. That was still a little, so we, again, I think should be a really strong application for that, will be requesting four hundred, four hundred and two hundred. Um, and that, you know, will be for the bus, or the car, or, I'm sorry, I'm getting myself, yeah, car expansions, so that would close the sidewalk, and on West Avenue, um, with the call, there's a ditch there, and we're still, and we're crossing, again, the flashing beacon, so that anyone who's eventually crossing from forty-two over with that project will be, and walk all the way down West Avenue, whether it's on the north side and into the, or the south side, that was a sizable gap in that. The next one is the four-way, get funds program, um, this is, uh, thankfully, the call window, and so we're really excited for this opportunity. Um, we're gonna be applying for that, and the first one, get, that will be to, it, we'll get funds to complete funding engineering, um, to research and plan for the uptown intersection of Main Street and Chillicothe, to turn, traditional four-way intersection. Um, transportation plan, their twenty twenty-three, twenty fifty transportation plan, listed this as one of the priority projects, they're really, I should say, intersection modification of that. That's one of our priorities, so we're really excited for that, we'll get that funding to be a good engineering. I'm sure, you know, the uptown master plan, that was approved last year, listed the intersection modification as a high priority, it's about a safety issue, and it certainly serves that. Last one there is, we got the C clean Ohio, and then we're clean, as a regular lane, um, that, due until junior application is a good where we are looking forward to applying for that. The last option, um, is, unfortunately, was unreported, um, again, for whatever reason. But, the first one, Ohio, is the water detection equipment, right, this would supply, um, leak detection equipment for, of course, to hear the actually use on many water ones, maybe the back for him, and then, on the L P W C, again, certainly, without, given the safe office school, um, don't look confident on that, but any questions, what happens to try and answer this?
And we appreciate the work on researching and applying for the grants. We know that is a timely, um, task and searching out and, and getting them applied for. So, thank you, thank you for that update, and does anybody have any questions?
I just have another comment, though, along that line, is, I was speaking to Mr. Dyer before the meeting, and it sounds like staff has done a lot of relationship building when they've been preparing for these grants, so I just say, you know, shout out to staff for all your hard work. That's fantastic.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay. Uh, we have several motions, and I believe we do have several, um, people in the audience that are getting ready to, uh, be appointed to serve on our committee, so make sure that we.
We not do the other, the other discussions.
Oh, I'm, oh my goodness. You're right. Thank you. I am so sorry. Mr. Hutchinson, I apologize.
She was just so excited.
I'm so excited.
Sorry, there's.
Mr. Hutchinson, the floor is yours for the, giving a zoning update.
I don't make this quick, so if you set the timer for one hour, just. Alright, uh, any, Mayor, council members, uh, staff? Uh, I, I just want to highlight, everyone has this, um, the document in front of you, this is kind of just a year review, two thousand twenty-three, the Planning, Zoning, Development Department, whatever we call ourselves over there. Um, we had an extremely busy year. Uh, this year, we're not even a month into twenty twenty-four, but we're just as busy this January as we were last year. So, uh, I just wanna go over some stats. Uh, I'm not gonna go through line to line, I just wanna highlight some stuff for you. But, uh, uh, busy year. So, last year, uh, we had fourteen, uh, initial concept meetings from developers. Uh, a lot of those came to fruition, and a lot of those are still in the works. Uh, we've already had, uh, one this, this year already, uh, come to staff, so, uh, we anticipate a lot more coming, uh, this spring. Uh, had one completed annexation this year. Uh, we have two that filed, and we have, uh, three that are preparing already for this spring as well, so we're, we're, we're on the ground running already, so. Uh, lots of developments approved in twenty twenty-three, a lot of our existing ones. Uh, we got a lot underway right now. There's, I got a breakdown there for you, for all the housing numbers, for all the developments that we have, uh, underway. Ones that, just to highlight some of the, uh, developments that we're anticipating filing, uh, this spring, or probably within the next couple of months. Uh, Beechy Farms, we're all familiar with that one, Virginia Homes product. Um, we should see, uh, a preliminary plan for that one here shortly. Uh, the Alcott Development and Fisher Homes, uh, so those are ones that we're going to see probably pretty early on. Uh, start going through the, the development planning on those. Uh, and then we have, uh, the spot, uh, we, last year, we, uh, approved the preliminary development plan, did the zoning, and they're here in ready tonight for the, uh, for the final development plan for that, so we're excited for that. Uh, twelve new businesses we had last year, so that was great. Uh, we had five existing businesses that either expanded or relocated. Zoning permits, gosh, we, record-breaking, I mean, this, there's no way we, that we had probably ever had this many, but we had five hundred seventy-four. Uh, we had three hundred sixty-nine the year before, uh, and it was even lower than that, prior, uh, prior to that. Hundred eighty-seven new homes. Um, gosh, we had probably a record number of agenda items on planning and zoning. We had forty-five agenda items. We had three special meetings to accommodate a lot of that. Uh, I, I anticipate the same this year, so it's gonna be another busy, busy year. Um, revenues, I, 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 I wanted to highlight that, um, just to, just so you see kind of what the money comes to my hands that I wanna keep, but, uh, you know, we gotta give that up, but, yeah, so almost two point eight million dollars came through our, just our department alone. Um, you know, some of that, not all that is, is, is revenue or, you know, general fund stuff. A lot of this is passed through, through engineering and, and capacity fees and that stuff. Uh, water and sewer capacity fees, you'll notice those fees, uh, well, honestly, this total will be lower next year, because we won't, we will no longer see those water sewer capacity fees. Uh, impact fees, though, we will see go up, not only just because we have more, but, uh, a lot of our current developments were started prior to the impact fees, so we're not seeing those impact fees through those. Uh, so, next year, those fees will be, uh, a lot higher. Staffing accomplishments, so last year, we hired on, uh, Colin as our new zoning specialist. Uh, he has been doing excellent. Exceeds what, uh, what we were hoping for, so keep up the good work. Uh, we also had an intern, Cameron, uh, last year, which, uh, was awesome. It was very helpful. We're hoping to do the same this year. Uh, that was through Morpsy. Uh, we attended numerous conferences last year. Uh, some of our major incentives, uh, initiatives that we had was launched, uh, and completed the Economic Development Strategy, uh, established the Economic Development Committee, uh, annexation policy and procedures. Uh, gosh, there's, I mean, you can see the list. We, we had a lot going on last year. Community engagement, you know, helping, uh, build our relationships with some of our other local entities, the school board. Uh, we met with them numerous times. I mean, it was almost weekly at some points. Um, our, our Pleasant Fire, Fire, uh, Fire District, uh, meet with other municipalities, uh, in cities that are around us and border us. Um, we have a lot more to come, so just, uh, buckle up and get ready for a wild ride, because it's gonna be a, be another busy year, so, um, at this time, I'll take any questions or comments or.
Um, just kind of a general comment. I know, uh, Ms. Ferguson, you know, we've kind of been talking, we talked with Miss Lufton, um, I guess, for me, it's just, this whole area is growing, you know, it's just, it, you know, we're doing a good job of, of working with stuff, but just, um, as we talk about really increasing our partnerships with, you know, the, the county, the townships, uh, you know, we all gotta be pulling in the same direction, so I think just, as we're growing, you know, just making sure we have good relationships with, with all of our surrounding partners, so as, as we plan, you know, we want a road to go here, you know, make sure we develop, everything's going the right way, so we're not all developing backwards.
With a lot of our partners, you know, and I, I call it partners, that we are partnering with the Derby Townships, with even with the city Dublin, I mean, we, we're in constant contact and, and, you know, there's, there's things that they may do that could impact us, and there's things that we do may impact them. We have, you know, really clear lines of communication going on and how we could help each other. We're really, uh, I, I've been very pleased with, uh, uh, just the outreach and the help offered and the, and the, just the conversations that are ongoing with, with all of our local municipalities and surrounding townships and stuff, so it's been, it's been great.
Any other questions or comments? Just personally.
Just applauding, uh, staff for their efforts. I mean, my gosh, this is an incredible list of accomplishments and catching us up from all the years behind that we have done, so thank you, thank you. We appreciate all that you do.
Yeah, I was literally just thinking about that, that, like, you sometimes, week to week, you're like, oh, we're getting anything done, and you sit back and you look at, like, one year of stuff, and you guys, like, I love these updates to both this, the Justin and this one, just showing all the stuff, all the good stuff we're doing. People usually only talk about the bad stuff and when they're mad, but this is awesome. So, thank you for the update. Thank you for all you guys' hard work. And, uh, glad you guys get to do it again.
All over, yeah. And I would say, I, I came off, it's, I know on the, at least on the P and Z side, but, you know, the, the amount of work that the, the committee members who are on there, because, I mean, they're all volunteer, and I know we've had, you know, Mayor Carter, you know, we had a couple of those marathon meetings where you're, you know, three-hour meetings, and, you know, everybody's basically a volunteer in there. Um, so just make sure as you work with those committees, at least for me, and I'm sure probably rest of council, extend our thanks for their dedication for that, too.
Well, I don't know if it's, Quincy's not, our first planning meeting without you there was twenty-nine minutes long.
That was the quickest one we ever had.
Like, let me see what it is, and, you know, I mean, Mr., you know, Mr. Swake runs the tight shifts and gets it done in twenty-seven minutes, so.
So, and appreciate the time, yes, that is put in there, and I, as you're seeing it later on in our, um, readings and, and setting it for the public hearing, like, that, there's a lot of work, so appreciate that. And the communication, I have, um, received many comments, um, great comments about how accessible our website is and just all the efforts. It's, um, so much, we're light years ahead of where we have been, so appreciate it. Thank you. So I don't forget that, anything else? Recreational marijuana is the next topic in our discussion for the sea thing.
Yeah, go ahead and introduce the topic. Um, I just wanted to make sure that council had the opportunity to deliberate on this. We don't necessarily need a decision tonight, but a direction that, uh, council wants to act, um, so we can get started on that. Um, from Frost Ground Todd's website, it's gonna be in several months still before the Division of Cannabis Control is established. They set their rules, uh, licensing requirements and all of that, so we don't have to be in a hurry, however, other municipalities have already enacted, um, legislation. So, O R C does permit a municipality to prohibit adult-use cannabis operators within the municipality. So, local governments can, um, take no action until there's a clearer picture on how the General Assembly and Governor respond to the passage, um, including the establishment of the Division of Cannabis Control, adopt a moratorium on recreational businesses for six months to one year while this occurs. Um, initiate a process to go ahead and start implementing our zoning codes, resolutions for the development standards to, uh, prohibit recreational marijuana if we choose to, or, um, be in favor of it and choose to do nothing, basically, allow it and not, um, worry about it, so. Um, L U C is available. They'll help us write legislation however we want to proceed. But just wanted to bring it up and make sure that if, if council, something council is wanting to act sooner, that we can start putting that together to get into place. An interesting stat, um, I put together the election results, um, fifty-one point two percent of residents voted yes in favor of issue two. Um, forty-eight point seven percent of residents voted no.
Here in, like, in Plant City.
Personally, I, I'm not big on, like, government overreach or quick, like, decisions, but I'm also hesitant to, like, allow something that we don't have information about, so the moratorium sounds like a really good option, because we can learn for like a year, like, and see what other municipalities are doing. I think a big old pause button for a year is we see, like, how it works around the surrounding districts and surrounding villages might be, because I just don't know that much about, like, any of this, so to me, not making, like, I hate to punt, but like, feels like a good time to punt, like, for a year or so, and just say, doesn't mean we, we have to allow it a year. We can just give ourselves a window to make the decision, and while they're finalizing the rules and everything. So I guess to me, that's kind of my initial thought.
Is there any risk to punting? Do we risk anything like that?
I don't believe so. According to this article, it's probably gonna be the end of the year anyway, before all these guidelines are established. Um, so it's just kind of helps us maybe avoid the awkward situations, someone tries to get ahead of it, and we, we have a timeline that we have to work on.
If we just establish a pun, and then even if we come back to and repun, I mean, you know, you could punt again, but until there's rule, like, I just, I don't know. I, I have a hard time making a definitive statement when I don't know what I'm making a definitive statement about, really, but I, I can also see other options, but that's just my off-the-cuff answer.
The mor, if I could just say something real quick, the moratorium option is what a lot of local governments are choosing to do at this point.
Get ahead of it.
I think it's a good option. Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think just, we don't know anything, so, you know, if we can just hold it off as long as possible, so we get something.
Yep. How does our other ordinance that was passed previously, that was for, I know. Dispensaries.
This is for recreational businesses. Commercial sale of cannabis.
Right. Yeah, I would like the moratorium.
Yeah, we at least do a year, right, like?
I mean, I would personally, not like any sales in the village, but definitely, this would prevent.
Yeah, I don't think we're stopping that from being the end game, right? But once we have the rules, we understand what we can say no to, like.
Okay, we'll get that prepared and you can go back to council for consideration.
Okay, thank you. And we added in the noise ordinance, um, wanted to kind of get a, where everybody was at with it, and then to see if we would basically, if we could put it on for a first reading.
I believe we have a meet, we were supposed to meet on it this past Friday. We did not, so, and it got bumped. Um, so it's got moved to this Friday, so we've not had another meeting yet to find out about some of the changes that have been requested, so.
It's canceled last Friday, you do a lot of.
Right, oh, yes, definitely. Last, last week was canceled, basically.
It's been two weeks before the February meeting, so we can see it.
Okay.
I, I think from my position in this is, like, I'm ready just to, like, get it on, get a vote on that, up or down, move on. get a vote on it, up or down, move on, one way or the other, to be honest.
Okay, all right. We need a motion to set the public hearing for the rezoning of zero U S forty-two parcels number zero two dash zero 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 two nine, parcel number zero two dash zero 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 two nine point zero zero one, and number zero two dash zero 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 two nine dot zero zero two, P Z dash twenty-three dash eight, from Darby Township Agricultural District A one to Plan Development, P U D from March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Solomon.
Second.
Ms. Hurd.
Yes.
Uh, Stain.
Vizel.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Yes, I don't think you have to, so, I, I, so I think, I think we should tighten that up, but I think as long as it's, uh, not, I wouldn't talk to Mr. Lock, but as long as it's not an appeal of a decision the planning and zoning made, uh, this is just a public hearing, right, what do you, what is this?
I, I know he was saying basically, just since I have a butt to it, I think wanted me just to-
Oh, not because you were on, okay, I thought it was because you were betting on this one.
Property butting to that one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So that was Mr.?
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so I was just, yeah, standing for that, my properties, a butt to that one, so.
So motion passed four to one abstention. And is there a motion accepting the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve P U D dash twenty-four dash one final development plan for the spot?
Motion to accept Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for the spot. Second.
Ms. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Terry. Yes. Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. And, um, for the ones that are here this evening that we are getting ready to put on to committees, um, I would like to o- offer you to, um, you can stand up and introduce yourself, um, just so that way, uh, the council members, you know, can get to know you, and our first one is a motion to appoint Zachary Robbins to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Absolutely, motion, motion to appoint Zach to the-
But you let him speak, you want him to speak?
Well, I don't want him to back out after those hours of volunteering, huh? You can introduce yourself.
So, maybe everyone remembers my name, I'm, I've been for council, so, I ran for council, uh, so I'm on the board, and then they wouldn't let him go. I've been trying to serve on, um, a sub community, get a bit of road experience, long time ago, about two years, uh, but my background is in insurance, I went to college degree in actuarial science, which is just, you know, a bunch of finance and systems class of, and I'm sure, make sure we don't go on that word, and so this is going to be, we got around that, we're here, it's, um, every minute, so, and, 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 and.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins, so Mr. Terry moved.
Second.
Mr. Sands seconded.
Ms. Hurd.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Yes.
Vizel.
Motion passes five to zero, um, our next is, and I hope I do not, I'm going to have you introduce yourself first.
Just try it.
To be your lomo. Dejra, okay.
I'm Dejra, I'm now, uh, by Billy and Ires, we're into, um, speaking, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Department of Development for the state of Ohio, um, I've got friends in, all the markets, um, I've worked at O B M, I've worked at the City of Love, in their financial shop, um, education and development, so, um, my husband and I are very enthusiastic to serve, he's a hired captain of our township, um, and I'm delighted to be joining these years.
Awesome. We are very excited to have you and welcome, um, is there a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint, second.
Yes. Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, um, in discussion, thank you so much, yes, 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 thank you, thank you. Um, and then I do not see Mr. Vixel here this evening, but a motion to appoint Sean Bischel to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Motion to appoint Mr. Bischel.
Second.
Yes. Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Yes. And motion to appoint, um, Emily Waldo to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Motion to appoint Emily Waldo to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, motion to appoint Mr. T J Tripp to serve on the Board of the Mid Ohio Water and Sewer District, and Mr. Tripp is here, if you'd like to give us a little background and information.
Yeah, T J Tripp, I am an area real estate broker, and so excited to be able to use some of my previous skills as well, I used to work for a title company, so, dealing with a lot of, uh, a lot of the really, really boring stuff with real estate, but this is a very important, I'm literally, the foundation of any development, so I'm excited to be able to make skills to use on behalf of the village.
A motion to appoint T J Tripp.
I will second.
Yes.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Motion passes to appoint T J Tripp, five to zero. Moving into unfinished business, we have the second reading of ordinance thirty-six dash twenty twenty-three, amending the codified ordinances additions of chapter eleven eighty-five dot zero six, Uptown Commercial Overlay District, and the removal of chapter thirteen twenty-seven of part thirteen of the building code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance thirty-six twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Vizel.
Yes.
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 Vizel.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, second reading ordinance one dash twenty twenty-four, amending the codified ordinances, chapter eleven thirty-seven, definitions of part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance zero one twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Motion passes of ordinance one dash twenty twenty-four, five to zero, second reading ordinance three dash twenty twenty-four, amending the codified ordinances, chapter one eighty-seven, income tax effective, January first, twenty twenty, of part one of the administrative code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance oh three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Terry. Yes. Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Ordinance three dash twenty twenty-four passes five to nothing, second reading resolution one dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the execution of a contract with GovDeals Inc. for internet-based auction services for twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve second reading resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Resolution one dash twenty twenty-four passes five to nothing, second reading resolution four dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing and directing the village administrator to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with Paragon Building Group, L T D.
And clarification is, this is one for the all cut prop, or I'm sorry, the Beechey Farms property, is that correct, okay.
Motion.
Motion to approve second reading resolution oh four, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Herrmann.
Uh, Stain.
Vizel Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Resolution four dash twenty twenty-four passes four with one abstention. Second reading resolution five dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the incorporation of the Plain City Area Development Corporation.
Motion to approve second reading resolution oh five, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Ms. Hurdson.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Resolution five dash twenty twenty-four passed five to nothing. Moving into new business, first reading resolution six dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the re-establishment of the Economic Development Committee, and this is, do, we need, can we waive the second reading, since we are already into?
Yes, you definitely can, it's just some administrative cleanup, since we combined the committees.
Motion to waive second reading, resolution zero six, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution zero six, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Yes.
Vizel.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
The second reading was waived five to nothing, and the resolution six dash twenty twenty-four was passed five to nothing, first reading resolution seven dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing and directing the village administrator to apply for safe routes to school project funding. First reading resolution eight dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing and directing the village administrator to apply to the CorpO dedicated funds program and requesting a waiver of the second reading.
So, a motion to waive the second reading for resolution zero eight, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Yes. Vizel Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Hurdson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Second reading was waived five to nothing.
And then motion to approve, uh, resolution zero eight, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Ms. Hurdson.
Yes.
And resolution eight dash twenty twenty-four was approved five to nothing, five to zero, um, that concludes our, uh, regular, our in-person, um, part of the council meeting, we are about to go into an executive session, and we will not be coming back with, um, further information or, um, further business, so we thank everybody for attending, uh, this will just be with council and administrator.
Motion to enter executive session pursuant to a higher rights code, section one twenty-one dot two two G one, to consider the employment of a public employee.
Second.
Ms. Hurdson.
Yes.
Yes.
Vizel Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
We are entering into executive session with a motion of five to nothing.
Thanks, Shane.